Let's call this meeting of the Aurora City Council for September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. To order, Madam Clerk, you please call the way.
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderwoman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Messiakos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Tolliver?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Lash?
Here.
Alderman Warman?
Here.
Here, Ervin's present.
Is there a motion to approve an appointment in the Sargent's armed first meeting?
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Let's start this meeting off by, uh, we sign the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation to be led by Alderman Bug.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you this evening and we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your insight as we do the will of the people of the city of Aurora. Give us insight, give us the knowledge to make good decisions on behalf of our citizens and our businesses. Lord, we ask you to bless all of our first responders, our police, our fire, those who are serving in the military and those veterans. Prepare all this in the name of your son.
Amen.
Amen.
I have to apologize for us starting a little bit late, being a little tardy. We're waiting for a special guest to arrive and that special guest is here. So I will let Mr. Mohammed take us forward, uh, under the mayor's office community affairs presentation.
Good, good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We moved the podium tonight so we can have a full view of our presentation this evening. You know, September's turned out to be just a month of celebrating, remembering and commemorating heroes. September eleventh, you know, we talked about those public safety officials who faced, ran into the face of danger to save lives and many of them lost their lives. That later, that Friday, the fifteenth, we honored P O W M I A, uh, recognition day. Those who left home and not only just not returned, were not found or just became persons of war, we honored them. Um, and then last week, uh, we saw that heroes really come from all of the ranks. There's two quotes on the screen. One says, "A hero is not a noun, but a verb. It's about action." A hero is one who voluntarily walks into the unknown. And we have two city staff members who are here with us today who exemplify what a hero means. They walked into the unknown. It was about action. And because of their heroic actions, a handsome little one-year-old boy named Julian is alive and well here with us today. And those two heroes are here with us as well. Give a round of applause for Josh Elrod and Daniel Chavez. Can you two can stand up, Josh and Daniel? Thank you, brother. Take a little look at their story. I will need volume from the control room. We'll go back. Control room, you can put the volume back up. One second. And as we, here we go.
Happening today, a big honor for two city of Aurora employees.
The water and sewer division employees, split second decision saved the life of a one-year-old baby last week. The city says Daniel Chavez and Josh Elrod were on routine duties last week when they heard the baby mother screaming because her one-year-old was unresponsive. Elrod called nine-one-one for the mother because she couldn't speak English while Chavez performed CPR. Today, they will be recognized for their bravery during a ceremony at city hall.
Well deserved.
Special honor for two employees with the city of Aurora tonight. Daniel Chavez and Josh Elrod are credited with saving the life of a one-year-old boy last week. They heard screams from the boy's mother while they were on duty with the water and sewer division. So they ran to the home where the mother had her lifeless child in her arms. Josh called nine-one-one, Daniel performed CPR, and by the time the paramedics arrived, that baby was already breathing again. They will be recognized for their heroic actions at tonight's city council meeting. Above and beyond there, congratulations to them.
And new this morning, two Aurora City employees are being honored for helping to save the life of a baby. Daniel Chavez performed CPR on the unresponsive child as Josh Elrod translated for the child's mother and called nine-one-one. They both work in Aurora's water department. Well done to you both. Talk about teamwork.
Ain't lying, right? In the right place at the right time.
Yeah.
Uh, six past the hour, weather and traffic. Uh, Tracy, how's that rain looking?
Wow, what heroes. What a good morning.
Mire esto esta tarde, dos empleados de la ciudad de Aurora estarán siendo honrados por funcionarios de esa ciudad tras su heroica acción al salvar a un bebé de solamente un año. Daniel Chavez y Josh Elrod salvaron al infante mientras realizaban su trabajo de rutina con el departamento de agua y alcantarillado. Ambos escucharon el grito de una madre desesperada que sostenía a su bebé inconsciente. Momentos después, ambos respondieron al llamado y le realizaron reanimación cardiopulmonar hasta que llegaron los paramédicos. Ambos, que está viendo aquí en pantalla, pues eran reconocidos por el alcalde, Richard Ervin. Así que muchas felicidades a ellos por esta, pues, heroica labor al salvarle la vida a este bebé de apenas, eh, un año y un latino, ¿no? Muy bien. Muy bien por ellos, la verdad. Y qué bueno que la ciudad lo reconoce y...
Another round of applause for our hero from the water and sewer division, Daniel Chavez, Josh Elrod. On a normal day, an ordinary work day on the nineteenth, they went out in the afternoon doing their normal duties with excellence and life changed tremendously. But because of their quick-thinking actions, we're celebrating life tonight. Let's take a quick listen into that nine-one-one call.
(inaudible) breathing. Nine-one-one, can I help you?
I need, uh, I need, uh, paramedics or somebody had, uh, let me, uh, get an address. We got a kid not breathing.
Okay, is that at twelve thirty-four Lafayette?
Say that again?
Is that at twelve thirty-four Lafayette?
Uh, yeah, yes ma'am.
Okay, they're gonna be in that, okay? Is it, you said the child's not breathing?
I think we, uh, we're performing CPR right now.
Okay, all right, they're coming over, okay?
Uh, please, thank you.
All right, do you know how old this child is?
How old? Hey, how old is he? Uh, nine.
Okay, can you actually see? Okay, sir? Sir?
Yeah.
Sir, okay. My partner has someone on the phone, but they're just yelling, so I'm gonna communicate through you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that person that's doing CPR, are they actively doing CPR, like the child's flat on his back?
Yeah, he's flat on the back, pumping his chest.
You're pumping the chest? And it's, how old is the child?
Breathe a little bit, uh, like five, maybe, maybe even younger.
Okay. All right, can, are you, do you speak Spanish at all?
Uh, don't. I can, I can push the pump, but, uh...
Because of that call, we know that heroes don't have to wear capes. They do wear city Aurora t-shirts and hats, though. Another round of applause for Josh Elrod. Daniel Chavez was so proud of you. The fact that in that moment, Julian wasn't breathing and here he is today smiling here, walking around city hall, waving. We're gonna ask that Josh and Daniel join the mayor down front. Let's give them a round of applause as they make their way down. Before the mayor speaks, we would ask our superintendent of the water and sewer division, Mr. Mike Houston, to please join us, and our deputy chief of the Aurora Fire Department, Dan Osman, come on down as well. Another round of applause. And lastly, the star of our show tonight, and he's already coming down there. We're gonna ask his mother, Paulina, who, uh, made the initial call, and Julian, to please join us, and she'll be joined by Savannah, who will help her to interpret it. Round of applause for Paulina Rodriguez and Julian Carrer. Let's give another round of applause for our heroes here tonight. And young Julian. You know, as was pointed out earlier, uh, you forgot his bat. Go back. Let's give a round of applause for young Julian. He is the star of our show. But we have to recognize those that are willing to step up and be those heroes that we need in circumstances when we need them. I'm sure neither, neither one of these gentlemen thought that they were gonna be doing anything other than their job, that they do every single day, day in and day out for the city of Aurora, when they came on that call. But when they saw this little boy in stress, distress, and heard their mother crying out for her child, they jumped into action. Not prepared, not knowing what would happen, jumping into that unknown. He doesn't have far to fall. He's all right. Jumping into that unknown and saving the life, saving the life of a little boy, not yet one-year-old, one-year-old, that hadn't even lived yet. They gave him that opportunity to live the rest of his young life and to be that little worker bee that he is being right now. Another round of applause for our heroes, this little boy that they saved. And before the mayor presents the award, before the mayor presents the award, we're gonna learn a little bit more about our star employees here. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mike Houston to step to the mic and share a little bit about your team members, brother.
Uh, good evening. Um, words can't express enough how proud I am of these guys. I mean, they, they went above and beyond, represented the city well, and more importantly, I'm biased, but the water and sewer division. So, um, you know, these guys, they're, they're, they go out, they work hard. Um, we, we try to have fun at work, um, and it just stresses how important advanced lifesaving techniques are and for us to learn them and to know them. So I just, I'm proud to know these guys and, uh, I'm glad to work alongside of them.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Osman represents the fire department and our chief, uh, went to send words through him.
Good evening. Um, our police officers and firefighters, we have the title of first responders. This is an example of someone with the right training and the willingness to act, how they become the first responders. So thanks, guys. It was, it's a big step, you know? Takes a lot to do that. And there's your prize right there to show that it works. We're working to get all of our city employees through CPR training, too. That's a little plug for us, but thank you.
Thank you. The mayor has a special presentation. So, whenever someone goes above and beyond here in the city of Aurora, we'd like to give them a war, an award that we call an MVP award. Because when they stepped up and saved little Julian's life and, and put breath back in his lifeless body, they became most valuable players for the city of Aurora. So on today, I'd like to give the mayor's MVP award to both Daniel Chavez and Josh Elrod for your lifesaving heroic efforts to save the life of a child. You are a hero and an inspiration to the entire city of Aurora, to this entire state, and to this entire country. Thank you, gentlemen. There we go. These are heroes. In the face of danger, they ran to save a life. They know what the outcome would be, but they know they couldn't just stand by and do nothing. And they worked together in unison to make certain that the outcome was incredible. Josh, Daniel, we're very proud of both of you. Because you have gone above and beyond, we wanna make certain that your colleagues at, uh, the department know, you know, how proud we are of you. Um, and so we have for you as well... Your own street things. We appreciate Daniel and Josh as well. If either of you'd like to share any comments, please.
Uh, no, I don't. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for putting us in this opportunity to help this young child and that he's, he's got another day to live. I'd like to thank, uh, my management for putting us through this training and, you know, so it, it helps, you know? You never, you never think you don't need it until you do, so.
Thank you, Josh. Any words, Daniel? Our mother's here, Paulina, with her son. She's here with her interpreter who will translate for us in English. If you'd like to share some words to our heroes.
Bueno, buenas tardes a todos. Primeramente, gracias a la ciudad de Aurora por hacer la conexión de encontrarme con estos hombres tan buenos. Ese día, por las circunstancias que se dieron, yo no pude agradecer lo que hicieron por mi hijo. Y pues realmente yo aquí les doy las gracias porque quizás hubiese pasado algo diferente con mi hijo si ellos no hubiesen aparecido. Yo les agradezco, al igual que mi familia, el hecho tan, tan empático que tuvieron al ayudar a mi hijo. Y pues que Dios les multiplique con bendiciones el gesto tan, tan bueno que hicieron. Igual pues creer que existen personas empáticas aún, que sin importar ellos dejaron su trabajo para ayudarnos a nosotros, a que mi hijo estuviera bien. Quizás si él no hubiera hecho lo que hizo, mi niño no estaría respirando ahorita. Gracias.
First of all, I just wanna say thank you to the city of Aurora to put on my way these, uh, people that, uh, thanks God that they were at that moment. And if they didn't do these heroic actions, I won't be having my baby now. I just want that God, uh, giving blessings. And thank you so much. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. And this is, these people are very empathic and I am very thankful for that.
Thank you so much. Because Daniel, because Daniel got down and did CPR and, and, and Josh made the call working together as a team. Julian's still alive and clearly full of energy, so we present his mom tonight with a gift bag of, of toys that can kinda help that energy this evening.
Clayton? Clayton, if I could? Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of, uh, the director of training, Madonna Carr, who cannot be here because I left her at my son's soccer game, uh, she is so proud of you two gentlemen who took the training that the city offers. She wished she could be here, of course. Um, and the training works, it's evident. So, uh, she is so proud of you and really carrying out the training and saving a life.
All right, we're gonna remove the mics. Thank you, Alderman Bug. Remove the mics and we're gonna do a group picture. Another round of applause for our heroes tonight. There we go. Again, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you to the entire team here at the city. Thank you, Paulina and little Julian. Another round of applause, brother. We have one more presentation in this section. After that, we're gonna break and step to the hallway and we'll do individual interviews for our media friends. So we can hang tight really quickly. Thank you.
All right, um, that concludes our, uh, community affairs presentations for this evening. Uh, before we go on with the rest of the agenda, 'cause I know many of you are here, uh, for this presentation and our heroes and to see this lovely little boy who's just full of life, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and give a, uh, opportunity for you to exit before we start our regular meeting. If you wanna stay, we're happy to have you stay, but I expect many of you are here just to see, uh, just to see, uh, our little boy walking and breathing and having a good time, which he's doing here today. So at this time, I'll give folks an opportunity to file out before we start the regular meeting.
And if Daniel, Josh, and Paulina can step right to the hallway on the big sign there, we're gonna do a group picture. If any of our media outlets would like interviews out front, you can please step out as well.
Very welcome.
Thank you, brother.
Josh. You're very welcome. All right, let's go ahead and, uh, get our regular meeting started. Uh, let's go to mayor, mayoral appointments. And nope, this item has been modified since C O W to remove, uh, a proposed appointment of, of Caroline Escobedo, who is no longer able to serve. Uh, Madam Clerk, and that's an additional person, uh, than the one we pulled off last week. Madam Clerk, will you please fall, call the first item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty-three dash zero six five four, a resolution approving the appointments of Johnson, Kunrat, and Brittany Chavaria to the Aurora Youth Council.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Bug. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Uh, do we have, uh, is Brittany or, uh, Johnson in the room with us? Hi, you guys, good to see you. I'll be within just one second, I'm gonna take a picture with you. Uh, with no objection, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's give both Brittany and Johnson a round of applause for the willingness to serve. Both of you meeting down the well, we'll take a picture.
Both of you meeting down the well, we'll take a picture. If there are banders who want to come up and take a picture, feel free to do so. Come all the way up to the front.
The banders want to come down and get in the picture with them, that's fine, that's fine as well. Come on, come on down. Yep, come on, jump in the picture.
I know today is only Tuesday. I'm sure you probably got a lot of busy work to do at school tomorrow to get ready for tomorrow. So I'll give you a few minutes to file out. You can stay if you'd like, but if you have to go, we understand. We'll give you a few minutes if you'd like to go.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Congratulations again.
All right, let's go on to the, there's no more, there are no more mayoral appointments.
Let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, will you read the rules for public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment?
Angela Collier.
Ms. Collier, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor Irving and City Council. I'm here tonight to address the abuse that my mother suffered. Two thousand and twenty-one, we went out in the streets of Aurora, protested Elmwood Nursing Home, also the Grove in Rush Copley. Rush Copley amputated my mother's left leg. My mother suffered with diabetes. She went back into the hospital from Grove, they amputated her right leg, and let her fall out of the bed, and my mother died a few months later. I just want city council to know what happened to my mother. My mother is Minnie Stewart. My mother died a day before Mother's Day. Every Mother's Day that come around, I got to think about the last vision that I saw my mother in tears of how she was neglected. My mother worked at Calapiller, she raised eight children in this city. I'm her second child. There's no way I can explain this to my grandchildren, how I lost my mother. We have pictures in their homes so they can see her. I'm tired of people just talking about what they're going to do about the abuse in the city with these nursing homes and Rush Copley. They never even gave us a letter apologizing to what happened to my mother. She hit her head and was rushed to ICU bleeding. She died at Olympia Fields Hospital in Madison. My sister took her out of Aurora because she got tired of my mother being abused. And I'm tired. Singers are calling me every day. You ride past these nursing homes, you never even walk in to look and see what's going on. You've got to do something, Mayor Irving. You have a law degree. These places need to be charged with neglect. My mother was seventy-five years old. There's no way they should have accused her of trying to escape Rush Copley Hospital. I can't even stand when my husband was in there. I had to take him home after fifteen days. I couldn't stand to be in there. I just want you all to think about this. When you go home, if you have parents and you have loved ones that will one day be sick, if you don't die young, you're going to live to get old. So we got to think about what's going to happen when we get to that point. Thank you.
Call the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
George Gutierrez.
Gutierrez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello, my name is George Gutierrez. I'm also known as Chicano in the community. I am here to speak on Chapter Thirty-two Peddlers and Solicitors from the Code of Ordinances, which is being modified and up for final passage tonight. I am asking the city council to refrain from voting and send it back to committee for further modification after the public has had a chance to voice their concerns and show how it will negatively affect them. When the ordinance for food truck vendors was up for modification, many of them were given notice, thereby allowing them to voice theirs in the many hearings and emergency meetings. Though it is not mandatory, we ask for the same. Banning temporary sales structures, i.e. pop-up tents, stands, tables, et cetera, will have a detrimental effect on many who make a living off of this or use it to supplement their already low income, especially those in the immigrant and Black and Latino communities and returning citizens from incarceration. All peddlers and solicitors are not in the same category or level and should not be in the same ordinance, i.e. the door-to-door, the door-to-door salesmen's, excuse me, I lost my place here. Anyway, the addition of requiring even peddlers or solicitors seeking a permits event to submit to a background check is ludicrous, as well as that they will be denied if convicted of certain offenses as a violent crime. If you cannot ban brick-and-mortar businesses from doing business while having these convictions, you cannot do so to peddlers and solicitors. What effect will that have on the city? It is already hard for these individuals to get jobs and housing. Now attempting to go into business for themselves to survive will be taken away. What will they be left with? And then if they are denied for such, for having such convictions, they can appeal, but it is left up to the city clerk to decide whether they have been rehabilitated or not. For the hours of operation, if granted a permit, these vendors will then only be able to sell at special events by the city or in certain zones and not on state or federal holidays and only for certain hours. Are brick-and-mortars restricted to same? Holidays are when they make the most sales. If a permit is approved and vendor requests, and vendor requests from one month up to six months, they would have to pay a monthly fee, what will, and besides that, what will they do for the next six months? I run a business called Chicano Times, which is a legitimate business, having gone through the county and state to be registered. I've also been convicted of a violent offense. I have also, I have been denied housing and certain jobs because of my past, still being denied recently because of my past. I'm asking the city council to refrain from voting tonight, send it back for modification because I think there are a lot of implications and unanswered questions that the community deserves to ask before this is approved, as it will affect a lot of people in the community, not only myself, returning citizens from being incarcerated, but immigrants and Latinos that I spoke on earlier. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Yula Foltz.
Ms. Foltz, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Why would you do that? Why would you do that? I'm full of, there are a lot of things that I went down with all of this unhurried. My son was abused in this, I say in the seventh ward, fifty-six years. I'm here to be address some of these grants, some of this housing stuff to re-update, improve your homes. And every time I'm sent out to one, they're out of money. They're out of money. And I'm a senior citizen, seventy-seven years old, just made it. And I do what I can, but I would like to be address some of these programs so I can get some help. And my son, he laying in a grave, fifty-three years old. And they talking about all this bruise and all this stuff was taking place. I don't even want to talk about it because it hurts for me to talk about it. Mayor, you know, I went to you to get a letter. I went to you to talk about the problem, you didn't have time. You never had time to talk to me about the situation with the law and everything. They told me it had anything to do with the city, you couldn't talk to me. So, like I say, I'm leaving it up to the Lord because he ain't through with this case. So, I can't talk about it because lose my son, they gonna bring him back. And so, he had enlarged hole in it, got beat down a few times. I don't know, I don't really know what to say because it hurts, it hurts to express myself. Because ain't none of this gonna bring him back. But he in the hands of the Lord. He suffered for two and a half years with a bruise. Would, like I say, I don't want to talk about it because it hurts for a mother to lose her child through a bruise through the law. I don't know that much about law, but y'all should have took out some time and sit down with me and explain something or found out this medical condition from the doctor's letters, church letters, neighborhood's letters. Nobody paid attention. Threw it in jail, abused. So, help me to pray about it, that's all I can say. Because I done give it to the Lord.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Adam Pauly.
Mr. Pauly, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thanks, everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody, our next regional school board meeting is October 2nd, six o'clock, up at the Regional Office of Education up in Geneva, Twenty-eighth North First Street, Geneva, Illinois. If you feel strongly about recording of meetings and transparency, feel free to come up and express yourself there. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Nate Pickler.
Mr. Pickler, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. I'm Nate Pickler, live in Ward Five, and I'm here to talk about HelloFresh again. A few months ago, the sound barrier wall project was completed by HelloFresh Factor Seventy-Five behind our community, and unfortunately, it doesn't work. There's been no change in vibrations, no change in sound, nothing, nothing perceptible to myself or my neighbors. This isn't the city council's fault, this is HelloFresh and Factor's fault for installing the wrong thing, for paying a contractor to install the wrong thing. What we're asking is for you guys to hold them accountable. If you remember when they had initially told city council that they were going to have no impact on the surrounding community, no smells, no odors, no fumes, no noise, no vibrations, and that is obviously all false. You can throw that all out the window. We're asking you to hold them accountable to what they said they were going to do. The money that they've spent so far has done nothing. There's more that they're going to do, and we need you to make sure that what they're actually going to do, what they're going to be spending money on, is actually going to help my community. This has been going on for way too long, it's way too serious now, and something needs to be done. So please, hold them accountable and make sure that they do what they said they were going to do and do right by us. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Sandra Gonzalez.
Ms. Gonzalez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
I am here to address the civility pledge, HelloFresh, and the peddling and soliciting ordinance. Civility. Civility is honoring our heroes even when we don't wear capes. Civility is celebrating the diversity that is the city of Aurora. Civility is having our alders live a hundred percent in the city and the wards they serve. Civility is acknowledging the wealth of business that Black, Brown, Indigenous, people of working class, immigrant, and justice-impacted folks bring to our community, not criminalizing them for trying to get to the next day by passing a racist peddling and soliciting ordinance. Civility is having alders who care for the health and safety of our neighborhoods instead of allowing for businesses like HelloFresh to be one hundred feet from my neighbors' homes and cause prolonged illness and environmental effects. Civility is having a fifth ward alder who instead causes constituents crazy and insists mitigation efforts are working. Many elected officials who represent Aurora have been contacted to draw awareness to this issue. Civility is allowing for an alder at large to advocate for his constituents instead of voting to silence the voices he represents. Civility is allowing for true participatory democracy instead of one where our mayor has demonstrated that not all skinfolk are kinfolk, making decisions that ultimately prove that he cares for making a profit at the expense of our community members. What this city council calls civility, I call xenophobia, racism, and outright violence against our minoritized community members and grassroots organizers who continue to watch for the day this city council will show their humanity.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
David Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hi there, everyone. David Cannon, Fifth Ward, you all know me. First, I'd like to speak regarding Resolution Twenty-three dash zero five seven one, the proposed changes to Chapter Thirty-two Peddlers and Solicitors. I just want to echo Jorge's remarks and ask that you pull it from the consent agenda to review as a full body. There are far too many changes included that will hurt Auroraans if you pass it without further scrutiny. Besides the real small business concerns, I'm concerned about the implications on free speech by limiting flyering. Other similar ordinances have been overturned after legal battles, and I want us to tread cautiously. There's no need to pass it today. I would also like to express my support for my neighbors living by HelloFresh. Just reiterate that HelloFresh problem is not resolved still. The fence that they erected without citizen input does not appear to be doing anything. The city must step in and address the concerns of the citizens. Now is the time. Now, on to this. On the matter of government ethics, what is this? What's the purpose of this mailer? Everyone in this room knows that it's a campaign piece, period. You cannot argue that it provides any value to our city. How much was spent on design, printing, mailing of this piece? Twenty thousand dollars? Thirty thousand dollars? More? That's a lot of money to me. I don't know about you, Mayor. Meanwhile, hundreds of our neighbors are living down at Hesse House tonight. Instead of this mailer, we could provide housing for a family for an entire year, maybe more. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask you to publicly disclose the cost of this mailer and to then reimburse the city from your urban for mayor or build our future PACs is the ethical thing to do. This is primarily a critique of our current mayor, but this is really a question to all of you, every single one of you. How are you spending our tax dollars? If your primary focus is to get reelected rather than to serve your constituents' most pressing needs, then you need not reapply. Thank you.
Any other speakers, ma'am?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Call the next speaker.
Shannon Buckley.
Shannon Buckley, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, council. My name is Shannon Buckley. I'm Fourth Ward resident. I'm here tonight to speak regarding item number two-three dash zero five seven one to amend the Peddlers and Solicitors ordinance. Much like the original version of the ordinance to regulate the food truck proprietors in our city, these amendments to the ordinance are not benefiting any Aurora citizens and are only targeting more vulnerable community members, predominantly our Black and Latina neighbors. Regulations such as these further expand racial inequities in our community, and they're unintentionally racist and classist. Instead of government overreach, I suggest sending this amendment back to RAP or Committee of the Whole and to set up meetings with people who are actually affected by these changes to address any issues that have caused these changes to come up and to find solutions that don't have unintended negative consequences for our neighbors. Thank you.
Do you have any additional speakers, ma'am?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That concludes our public comments. Let's go on to our information-only items. Madam Clerk, will you read our information-only items?
Twenty-three dash zero seven two nine, announcement of the availability of amendments to the West Farnsworth Tiff District Number Seven redevelopment project area and First Amendment to the redevelopment plan. Redevelopment Project Area and First Amendment to the Redevelopment Plan and Project. 23-0733, Announcement of the Availability of the Eligibility Study and Report and the Redevelopment Plan and Project for the Proposed Farnsworth-Bilter-Tiff District.
All right. Thank you very much. Those are for information only. No action needed on either of those items. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda in full. Before we have the council read the agenda in full, I believe there are Alderman Garza and one other have motions to remove an item from the consent agenda to have conversation on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alderman Denell, you want to move it as well? So you want to make that motion, Alderman Garza, consecutive?
I make the motion. We take item 23-0571.
Alderman Garza?
Second.
All right. Based on that motion and second, that item will be removed and put on unfinished business. Are there any questions or motion to remove any other items from the direct to council consent agenda or the consent agenda? Alderman Lesh?
Quick question on procedure. Do we need to vote on that motion and second?
Are there any other questions on any other items to be removed from the consent agenda or direct to council? There being none, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to read the?
I'm sorry.
Do we need to read those first, though?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. 23-0520, A Resolution to Accept the Selected Proposal for a Multi-Use Sculpture at 14 East Downer Place in Ward 2. 23-0629, A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Joint Funding Agreement with the State of Illinois, the Execution of a Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering in the not-to-exceed amount of $58,852 and the appropriation of $225,000 of MFT funds for the Farnsworth Avenue at Marshall Boulevard and Illinois Prairie Path Project. 23-0631, A Resolution to Award a Contract to Jetco Limited for the Water Treatment Plant Coatings Rehabilitation Project in the Amount of $431,560 for the Water Production Division. 23-0679, A Resolution to Accept Grant Funding from the Institute of Museum and Library Services for $41,998. 23-0703, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Execute a Change Order to the Agreement with Kluber Incorporated, $41 West Benton Street, in the Amount of $99,750 for Additional Design Services for the Second Floor Buildout of the New Public Works Combined Maintenance Facility. 23-0706, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Purchase a 60-Month Subscription for a Human Resources Information System from Ultimate Chronos Group, Weston, Florida, for a Total Award of $1,279,400 with a 10% contingency. 23-0717, A Resolution to Award the 5th Street and Bebjar Place Sewer Separation and Avon Street Water Main Replacement Project Located in Ward 2 to Girardi Sewer and Water Company in the Bid Amount of $1,072,530 and 0 cents. 23-0718, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Execute an Agreement with Ratio Architects in the Amount of $946,850 for Design Services at River Edge Park in Ward 1. 23-0719, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Execute a Contract with Hitchcock Design Group for Preliminary Design Services for Millennium Plaza in the Amount of $70,000 in Ward 2. 23-0731, A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Assignment and Assumption Agreement Regarding the Hotel Occupancy Tax Economic Incentive Agreement by and between the City of Aurora and Midwest Management, Holiday and Express, 111 North Broadway, in Aurora, Illinois. 23-0732, A Resolution Authorizing the Approval of an Agreement with MC2 to Provide Electrical Aggregation Services. 23-0696, A Resolution Concerning the Review of Closed Executive Session Meeting Minutes. 23-0697, Approval of Draft Closed Session Meeting Minutes. 23-0758, Approval of the Minutes of the Tuesday, September 12, 2023, City Council. Removed. Second?
There was a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza, to accept all the items on both the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda. I'll ask one more time because I did it out of turn before. Are there any other items that need to be removed? Or any other questions or comments on any of the items on either agenda? There being none, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item of unfinished business?
23-0617, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Purchase 5-Year Subscription for a Real-Time Crime Center Analytics Solution from Fusis Peachtree Corners for a Total Award of $666,328 with a 10% contingency. Removed.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Read the next item under unfinished business, the item that was removed from consent.
23-0571, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 32 of Code of Ordinances Pertaining to Peddlers and Solicitors.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
So moved by Alderman Smith, second by?
Second.
By Alderman Franco. Question or discussions? Alderman Garza?
Well, the discussion we're having here, I know we have some people not happy with this ordinance. But in another way, we need to have some kind of control. Myself personally, I receive so much complaints that happen here about people just putting a tent and selling a lot of stuff. Not only in Fusis, but they're selling flags. So I have complaints for an Easter selling Easter bunny baskets, Mother's Day baskets. And it's on and on and on every weekend. So the problem is how we want to control that. So I have complained, this is for 620 East New York Street. And I have the 800 block East Galina Boulevard, close to Ohio. And close to Smith. And Ohio and Galina was the supermercado before. Now it's like a small shopping, they have little stores in there, inside and restaurants. And every weekend outside in the city property, they put like some kind of stuff like a sale in there. So how we want to control that? If we're not doing some kind of ordinance like this one, how we want to stop these problems, these issues we're having here, all this, on and on and on? It's nothing against of us, some people, because I know some people, they do this for survival. And it's correct. They need to do something to survive, selling stuff. But if we have this kind of ordinance, maybe in the future, we need to working on it to have some kind of permit. Or we have so many festivals, they can sell in the, like vendors. So we have so many festivals, so they can put it in there and selling the whatever they want to sell it there, but with more control. Not like now, everybody do whatever they want. So this is, I think is, we need to do something, and it's why we need to pass this. It's my opinion.
Alderman Denell?
Mr. Mayor, I was contacted by one of my constituents today, asking questions about this. And so I wanted to give a forum so that we could provide some answers. And I appreciate, I had a sidebar discussion with Alderman Garza and understand from her perspective why this is important.
Alderman Lesh?
Sure. With respect to the tents, I do, I would like to see if, whether it gets pushed to a different committee to look at the idea of permitting, as Alderman Garza mentioned. Simply because there is, as I brought to Alderman Denell's attention prior to the meeting in Ward 4, right in my neighborhood, a small grocery store that has changed hand multiple times over the years on 4th Street. And they've only been there a few months, but they also just put out a tent in front of their business trying to move some of their produce and stuff outside and get more traction for sales. And I think that there's going to be room around the holidays either to have zones where people can set up, especially Mexican Independence Day, where people are selling flags without abusing it. So I think that there is room to approve the ordinance. The second thing, this came up for information only in PHST that I brought up was the idea that we're having them look at people's past criminal records, but we're not really doing a background check. So I guess if we're not really doing a background check, I guess I'm wondering why we're, why that part of the ordinance is there. So those are, I guess, my thoughts. I would like to see it moved to discussion with some changes that accommodate some of the small businesses.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah, just one comment and to share. Someone who has a store has the right to put a tent out in front of their own store and make a pop. It's not against that person. Am I incorrect?
There are zoning considerations. We have had cases go through admin hearings. You have to get a variance.
Even on their own property, but they can, if they go through that, they can, right. So they, so this is not against the store owner wanting to use their own property, correct? If they go through the proper channels?
Correct.
Right. Which, right now, do they have to do that? If they want to just go put up a pop-up tent right now?
Yes, you would have to make sure it's zoned, and you have to. Correct. Variance.
So my point is, we're not making any changes for the actual store owner themselves. That's something that they had to do anyways, correct? So I think that as we have discussion, I think it's really important to discuss what the changes are, not what's currently happening. So, so a store owner themselves can do this now. They just have to go through the proper channels. That's all I wanted to add to that.
Alderman Bug, did you have something?
I would just ask, along with what Alderwoman Smith said, can we just have some clarification from the clerk? I think they did an excellent job of bringing this forward, laying out kind of the details of what was happening. I must say that we did not get any public comment on this in our committee. Yeah, three committee meetings or a committee of the whole. So as far as notice to the public, we've had, we five weeks of notice to the public about this. So I don't believe that is an issue. But can the clerk just clarify some of these details? Not only things that we went through, but legalities that we're correcting, both from the state and federal level.
Madam Clerk?
Sure. Thank you. So I think the, some of the bigger issues that we are actually correcting, and if we were to look at the background check requirement, I think is, it's a big deal. We did do research. There are local municipalities who also require background checks. It's not uncommon to require the background check. But what we have right now is that we have in our code that in order to be issued a peddler or solicitor's permit, you cannot have a felony conviction. You cannot have two DUIs. You cannot be a sex offender. There's no rehabilitation provision in our code currently, and there's no real appeal process laid out in our code. So what we're doing with these changes is we are, we're limiting somewhat the offenses that preclude people from obtaining the permits. We are leaving in, we're proposing to leave in the sex offenders. And these are, when we think about this, we think about going door to door. So someone going door to door. No sex offenders. No one convicted of a violent crime, which could be use of force, sex offenses as well. No felony or criminal misdemeanor, a crime of moral turpitude. So like thefts, and that's within 10 years. So what we are looking at doing is with these background checks, that would be good for three years, we would be either precluding people from peddling or soliciting, or if they are able to present mitigation on their behalf as to how they've been rehabilitated, they can do that. That's what we're baking into this proposed code to allow more opportunities for people who have had experiences in the past that may not continue with them at this time. And we're also allowing an appeal. There's, we're providing an appeal provision so that if the person proposes a city clerk to review the rehabilitation and mitigation, if the city clerk denies, even after listening to that, there's an appeal process that's already in our code. So that's one big issue that we are trying to address with this that we actually think is way more fair for people who may have been precluded from peddling or soliciting in the past. The temporary sale structures, we heard some speakers today about that. What we are trying to avoid and what we have experienced in the past, especially in my office, is that we have people calling asking if they can set up a tent in a parking lot for two days to sell goods, which on the surface is not a bad thing. But the problem is, is that the, some people call us and they want to go about it the correct way. Most people either don't know the correct way or they choose not to call and go about it the correct way. So we have really, as Alderwoman Garza said, we have, we have no way of monitoring this, and we do get complaints. We receive complaints that there are people set up in vacant lots. Why can't I set up in a lot if they are setting up in a lot? And so what we're trying to clarify from our code by proposing these modifications is that currently, the code says that you cannot set up in a vacant lot. That's subject to interpretation as well, and we have been dealing with that a lot in the clerk's office. We want to lay out specific rules so that everyone can follow the rules, and they are not subject to interpretation. And that's, those are two of the biggest issues that we're trying to address with these proposals.
So this is actually giving the guidelines on different people, if they want to do things, if they want to do different type of solicitation or not peddling, but sales, vendor sales, this is providing a means for them to do it legally?
It is, but for the fact that we are specifically precluding temporary sale structures. And you'll notice in, in the first section, in the definition section, it defines clearly what a temporary sale structure is. And this is where a lot of the complaints do come from. It is really the tents on the corner that are up and down, you know, they're up one day, down the next. The code, as it is currently stated, allows for them to operate in a private business with the permission of the business owner. But that business has to sell the same goods that the people sell or proposing to sell out in the parking lot, basically. So again, this is subject to interpretation. I think that we've heard questions about lots of interpretations on this. And again, this is something that we are just proposing to clear up.
So just to be clear, it sounds like we're setting a formal process in place as well as giving due process to those that are applying and giving them an opportunity to appeal to a higher body?
That's correct. And I ran into a couple of very honest applicants under the current code who admitted that they, they had some criminal history in their background. But there was, there was really no reason under the current code for us to be asking that question because we had no, there was no remedy. There was no further procedure for that. So we are just trying to lay that out and give more people the opportunity.
And lastly, not only in this, we try and put everyone on an even playing field. So a brick and mortar business, they collect sales tax, which comes into the city and directly goes back to the residents. But if someone sets up a stand, we have had no way or means to collect these taxes that they are legally obligated to pay to the county, city, and state. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Yamas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, these changes to the ordinance do not just outright ban temporary sale structures, right? They're still going to be allowed within permitted designated areas. So Farmers Market, for example, is not going away. If we have some type of festival with music and vendors, that could be an appropriate place for one of these temporary sales structures. Is that correct?
That is correct, Alderman.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Alderman Seville, as our city council historian, you know, I want to ask that you comment on, because I know you'll know. Now, I believe it was, you know, myself, we were, as far, I was on Alderman at the time, I believe Alderman Garza may have been on, and you were on for sure, maybe Alderman Masiacos, when we did something very similar with the driveable popsicle trucks, the pedling popsicle trucks.
And push carts.
And push carts, exactly right. So talk a little bit about that, and why we did that, and why we've got to do this similar.
Well, the mayor brings up a good point on this. We did consider the push cart ordinance, because there was a lot of complaints going on in the city. I think it was, I think each of the Aldermen was actually experiencing complaints in their areas, and there was no ability to oversee what was going on. Some of the complaints were sanitary and the like, there was no place for the people who were pushing the carts to, to wash their hands, or even to go to the bathroom. So they were actually relieving themselves in the neighborhood, in front of the homeowners and the businesses that they were operating out of. And so there was a felt indeed that we needed some type of response on behalf of the community to have some regulation take place. And so there was a due process that proceeded, and it was a draft, and the city council was approved, and I think it's, it's really served our city well over the period of time and the like. And I can just say from experience too, I don't get a lot of complaints that maybe other wards do, but I just had one two weeks ago about businesses set up shops selling plaques and T-shirts in a multi-zone district, which would be office, business, and multifamily on the second floor there, and the neighbors were complaining. And I understand the concern with putting people out of the business, but we do have brick-and-mortar businesses that actually not only pay sales tax, but property tax as well, to different taxing bodies, that we're not necessarily receiving from these businesses that are just operating on the fly, so to speak. And there needs to be some, I think, some type of oversight with parameters, so people can still operate in our community.
Thank you, sir. I knew you'd know.
And also the music, ling, 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 ling. Remember that?
So are there?
Someone's complained for that.
I'll give Alderman Lash an opportunity to speak, based on all that we've talked about.
Thanks. I just wanted to ask the clerk one more question. What is the legal process now for a person in Mr. Gutierrez's position to set up business, and is there room to make a process for people who are vendors to pay sales tax on their daily sales? So I want to clarify what is the process for somebody who is, doesn't own necessarily the property, but does have approval from the person who owns the property? What is that process like?
So under the proposed changes, someone who does not own a business would not be able to set up and sell outside of that business. And Mr. Gutierrez, his situation aside, that would be for anyone under this proposal.
And then is there a process to collect sales tax from someone in that position as well?
Not that I am aware of at this time. You know, we have a hard enough time tracking down, and not everyone, and probably not the, the local Aurora residents who participate in these types of sales, but we do have lots of people from out of town, that we have a really impossible time tracking down when we have violations, those types of things. So we have, that's what we run into.
Mr. Minnick.
Good evening. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Alderman, there is indeed, under state auspices, a procedure for which a transient, it's called a transient merchant, can file and pay sales taxes to the Department of Revenue. In fact, if they are setting up a transient sales location, they are required under state law to do that. Enforcement, as you can imagine, can become a bit of an issue when you're talking about merchants that move around, but not, probably not necessarily if you have a merchant who's setting up in roughly the same location.
I would also add that we do have the farmer's market, where there is the fee where they can sign up as a miscellaneous vendor, if there's no food or grower portion, so that would be another way through the city, for the weekday market and the Saturday market.
So just to be clear, these individuals that have a concern about being able to sell there, whereas would be able to participate in the farmer's market and be able to sell there. As Alderman Garza pointed out, in the numerous events we have throughout the city, where someone that is not, that does not have a brick-and-mortar, and even is not a resident of the City of Aurora can participate, but as Ald, as Mr. Minnick, our CFO, pointed out, we still have to file with the state, as, what's the name of it again?
It's called, I believe it's called a transient, transient vendor's tax. They are supposed to have a tax ID number through the state, as any brick-and-mortar business is supposed to, and they're supposed to file a return on those sales.
All right. Well, thank you very much, appreciate that, Mr. Minnick. Well, I think we've talked about this, you know, as much as we're going to at this point. Madam Clerk, will you, you call the roll?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, will you? Where's our officer? Can you speak with that gentleman right there, make sure that he doesn't do that anymore? You know, is there a motion to spend the rules to consider items under new business?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
All right, read the first item under new business.
Twenty-three dash zero seven seven one, a resolution authorizing a first amendment to the redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of a new Italian restaurant known as Amore Mio, curated by Roberto Avia of Aurora, Illinois.
So moved.
Been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Mr. Debo, did you have anything to add to this particular item under new business? Mr. Debo.
Would there be any questions?
Are there any questions on this particular item?
Just a real quick question, is what is happening with that?
Mr. Debo, will you give a short presentation? I'm sorry, either Mr. Manila?
Just, just, really just quickly, there was an untimely death of the landlord, who we were working with to sign something that has to do with the deck, and something we've worked on a long time, but timing happened. Vernon, rest in peace, has been in the hospital for a month and couldn't sign it, and we had a condition in the original RDA that that was part of it, so we just couldn't do it. And we spoke to Linda, and it's just going to take some time to figure that out. That's really the reason we brought this.
I assume that was the case. I just wanted to verify and see what the long-term plans, although I'm sure it's going to take time.
And we'd be happy to talk more about it. It's, just, just again, to summarize, we do have a plan to do it, where the city has agreed to rebuild all those decks. They're old, so we wanted to do it originally in total, but we're going to do it individually, and we were dealing with Vernon, rest in peace, by himself.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. There are no reports that I need to report on this evening. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith. Are there questions or discussions on the bills? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.